Jim?
Yep.
It's 6:00 PM on July 26, 2022. I'm in a study session for the Board of Directors, Policy Metropolitan District. Go ahead, Jim.
Okay, first on the list is Resolution 08-2022. There's extra copies in the back. It's a menu of rules and regs. We will have a public hearing on it. This will be number five in the meeting. There were some changes. I did have both the red copy from the lawyer, the redline copy from the lawyer, and also the final draft as to her comments and what she wanted to do.
So Jim, we've gone over this. And I looked at his redline copy. Did you see anything that was an issue there?
No, I didn't. Actually, there was a couple of statutes that she had put in, added into it that made it a little bit stronger.
Oh, good. Okay. Any discussions with the board? Okay, go ahead.
Okay, next, yeah, Resolution 09-2022. It is accepting and confirming roads. This is Resolution Accepting and Confirming Roads. That will be maintained by Colorado City Metropolitan District. As you know, we've had some roads out for expedited, like Gilpin, Douglas Way, Jefferson Corp. will be in some little truckway. So we need to put them on our maintenance as we move forward. Basically, all of those roads are cul-de-sacs. We're going to cul-de-sac.
Questions, comments from board?
Yeah.
Who may?
So this is just basically housekeeping?
Yes, that would be for local county use. So that when they go to get their CO, that their driveway is now in our road and not county road.
Thank you.
Jim, are these all expedited?
Yeah, they were. The first three were, and the last one will be, is one expedited too. It just hasn't come in and done it yet.
Okay. Any other questions, comments?
Yes.
Let's go ahead.
Okay, next, I have Mr. Coulter wanted to do a presentation for the board through Colorado Rural Water. Mr. Coulter?
Thank you. Thanks for helping me get that set up too, Jim. This presentation is going to be a quick 10-minute one. And what it's about is asset management on here. And it's about how to develop an asset management tool and plan.
Can you see it? Let me walk this one over.
And it's called Effective Utilities Management. This was actually invented back in 2008. And I was lucky enough to be in a district where we implemented it. And what it's going to talk to us about here is asset management. Is anyone familiar with asset management? And you know it's a long process. And what it is, it's about finding your assets.
It's Kenny Rogers. Did you unmute yourself there?
Hopefully.
Isn't that?
Sorry about that, everybody.
Gotcha.
And this is Kenny Rogers. And what this is, is what condition my condition is in. Because that's the main thing we need to find whenever you're doing these asset management. What's the main purpose of asset management? Number one, to know what your assets are. Number two, where they are. And number three, what condition that they're in.
Kenny Rogers has changed.
Get it progressed here.
It's really slow. I don't want my computer to type it.
Well, you see it's kind of escaped out of air.
You're sure? If you're on the Wi-Fi, it's taking and forth, back and forth, so.
Current slide. So now you'll see the 10 attributes on the inside. The people who made this up, there was eight well-established utilities. And they used American Water Works and WEF. And they created those 10 attributes. And if you got those 10 attributes, you've got a well-established utility. Most important part is to protect your investment. And the first start of this is what are my assets? Where are my assets? And what condition are they in? And there's four steps to this process. Number one, and this will be the board and utilities department and the finance department all being together because it takes all four to make these work. Number one, you're going to assess your current achievements. And that's going to be based on a scale of one to five. With one being in good condition, and yes, we got an operation and maintenance plan on it, to five, if we don't know anything about it, in what condition is it in? Number two, we're going to rank that. There's 10 attributes. So you'll pick your first attribute as number one. And then you'll pick your second attribute as number two. And number three, we're going to graph that result. And what that result will do, it'll show you which one you're going to focus on, which ones need the most attention at that time. So those are the four steps. Show you a quick way of how this works. So you're going to assess these. This is the rating description. So you have one being in good condition, all the way down to five. And now you can hear what your utilities guys are actually working on when they tell you. And the different balls that they're dribbling out there on the court every day trying to make this happen. And the second thing we're going to do is rank the importance of these attributes. That's going to be from one to 10 because of the 10 attributes on that wheel. This is what your end product's going to look like. So if you look up there, product quality, this is in case you have violations on disinfection byproducts or others. And so that's going to be ranked as a five. And it's also going to be the most important. I put this up because I run across a lot of utilities in that. And then number two would be customer satisfaction. And so that's what your sheet's going to look like. Now, number three, you can see the ones in that blue square, product quality and customer service. Now you know what you're going to rank. I only chose three to go off of. And you can't quite see it over here, but that's a five and that's a one. So you take that five and one to get these. There's a four and a two, a four and two, and then the two and the six, we'll put that there. And I've worked this a lot of times. Now you can use that outside ring. The outside ring was actually came back in 2016, 2017. And these are management tools. Before, you had to just figure out your own. But now there's business processes in there that you can use to do the plan, do, check, act. That's called the Deming cycle. And now you've got to plan it, you've got to do it, and then you go back and revisit it by checking it. And are you getting there? And you have to set a timeframe, a budget, and you've got to have someone responsible for those. This is how you create an improvement plan. That near and long-term goals. Identify the resources that are available, the changes that need to be made. And you've got to assign these roles and responsibilities and the reportable time. And it has to be popped up. Biggest part is everyone in labs, right, Gary? You can't change what you don't measure.
True.
This is an example of an O and M plan. This is CMOM. That's for wastewater collection systems. NASCO is also for wastewater collection systems. These plans are written. You can copy these and use these for your entities out here. And it'll show you how to copy them and how to measure them and how to identify what shape they're in. This EMU, I've used it many times. It's almost getting a little bit too ancient with the modern technology because now you have everything on GIS. And you can get that instant data when they clean these lines, when they look down the manhole and it's eaten out. Automatic five, pull out a bunch of roots and a lot of grit. You can mark that. So this is it in a nutshell. Like I say, this is a 10-minute deal. This is a workshop that'll be with the whole group, the whole team working. But in reality, you've got three units. You have the management, who has to decide if the plan meets the goals and missions of this water district. And then you have your workers out here, which is a technical group. And then you have the finance to make sure that you have the money to fix and repair what you don't, what needs to happen. And what usually happens when you're starting this is it overwhelms you. Slow down. Get all your assets marked, get them identified, and get them categorized. And then you go to your finance and to your management and tell them what you got. And this is one thing I think Colorado City Metro's going to have is there's going to be a lot of zeros in the management and the maintenance part. And what do you do? Do you tell the customers right up front or do you tell them piecemeal at a time? But really, the way I've seen the most successful ones work is when you just give them the whole picture on the plate. And I know you've got your priorities set now. But when you do this and you talk about all those attributes and you fill that first sheet out, you'll get to hear what your operators and what they're dribbling right now. People are your number one asset. Don't forget it. That's it in a nutshell. If y'all would like to do this program and talk and make it happen, it takes about two to five hours depending on the discussions that you get. And then we'll make a decision on what happens. And it'll be up to the board to make the plan on what their mission statement is. And then Jim will get with his team and tell you that plan and the mission. And y'all need to all make it come together. And the finances are going to change, as you know. Anything you construct now, the finances are changing with. So any questions?
So you're suggesting a workshop? Is that what you're suggesting?
Yes, I'm suggesting a workshop and plan two, maybe five hours. I've seen them go five hours because now you can prioritize.
Would you include the management and the staff in the workshop?
I would include the whole team.
Including us?
Including the board, including management, and also the operators. Because do you know what the operators do each day? You will learn a lot that you didn't know that they did. And right now, they're keeping a lot of balls in the air. So they're running back and forth. And you know, that's something you kind of need to hear and see and understand because you're going to, somebody's going to set this goal and say, we expect this done in one week. And it has to be. This is where I see a lot of them fail, is as they say one week, but it gets dropped. They forgot because of day-to-day businesses. Oh, the engineering report's in. Oh, this is done. But this is where you need somebody saying, okay, it's the end of the week. Bob, you were supposed to do it. What's the report, Bob? And Bob, you know, he should feel free to talk to you. I did not get done because I was doing this, this, and this. Well, how do we correct that? This is the Deming law. Plan, do, check, act. You've got to have some business plans. And when you read this utility management, you'll see a lot of it in there. That's why we have those five outside rings and why that was created in 16. Because I saw a lot of utilities using it. Luckily, I had an Air Force Colonel who was very gold-driven. And so we did it. After they implemented the five management plans, now it became sense. And we were able to show that to the public. I've used it and don't mean to scare anyone here, but I had to raise the rates 100% twice on the wastewater. And at the end, 50% higher. And the water went up 100%. Three times over 10 years to get the system back in shape. It's a very good system. It's hard work, and it's pretty brutal.
Questions?
Can we do a workshop with our board?
We've got to do that. A lot of it.
That workshop.
I think that there's no reason you couldn't. I think that's something we'd definitely need to discuss as a board. And again, because of the opening that happened, we probably ought to discuss that individually and throughout the week, whatever, as far as ideas and thoughts. What do you think, Bill?
I think it's a good idea. We probably ought to consider it.
Terry? What do you think? Is there also a workshop? Let's discuss that this next week because I will talk to Jim as well as each one of the individual. That's okay.
And I can leave you a copy of those 10 attributes. And underneath, you'll see the points that they're trying to make. Whenever y'all, whenever the board and the staff come together, you need to be able to number these on that one-to-five scale, which is in the other paper that I give you. And now you'll know that scale. And you can think about it when you're home and see them. And then that way, you'll kind of have an idea. And there will be and should be some, you know, discussions.
Can you send me that, your email? Can you mail that back to the board?
You, that, would you like this also?
Yeah. So Mr. Coulter, would you run that workshop?
I'd be happy to. And like I say, I know it's hard to get the board on a day, so you know, if it is Saturday or whatever. Or, you know, y'all tell me, but.
Yeah, we could work that out. Sure.
Thanks, Mr. Coulter.
Thank you.
Okay, we've got a form. By the way, I want to go over the way to do it. We've got the auditions here, so appreciate you being there. All right, let's move on, Jim.
Okay. I have the new, our new postmaster that would like to, I don't know, partner board. He's having a situation where he's looking for property. He's looking for ideas and everything online. If you want to come up and do that, thanks.
It's been a long time since I've heard of Deming's program. And I approve. He's a good man. I'm Terry Iger.
Good, good, Jerry.
I just want to first start off by saying how welcome I felt by the people who've come into that post office. It's just been amazing. We were let down in the beginning because there was supposed to be some support coming in from the USPS, from Pueblo. They didn't show up. They didn't show up on Friday the first. They didn't show up on Saturday the second. I was there all day Sunday, and Monday was the holiday, the fourth. The people who showed up were volunteers and they served other people in ways that they didn't even know how yet. It was just, it was great. And all the comments have become sense. If you've been in the building in the last couple of years, you can tell that it's been pretty cramped. And so there's not, it is not a building set up to facilitate a postal system and a process flow of the mail and the packages that come in. There was a huge underestimated, underestimated volume by the USPS about how much, how much mail and how many packages come through here. It's unreal in comparison. It's supposed to, I don't know what you know about this postal setup compared to a post office, but the only, there's only a couple of things that we don't do or wouldn't do. And one of those is passport pictures. The other one is money orders and transfer of money, right? Everything else pretty much happens the same. This, this setup, the contract postal unit, is supposed to be a side gig to your main business. So it's supposed to be a separate, but a draw of customers into your business. And the volume amount that is there and that was stated in the first place, there is no way in the world that that can happen. This has to be, it has to be a fully-blown functional with three or four full-time employees handling all that volume. I don't know whether you've been in there for the, in the last month, but to see the racks of packages, that one room is what was supposed to be for the securing of packages at night. There's no way that those things can fit in there on a daily basis anyway. So those two things, that's supposed to be a side business. And the other thing that I'd like to put in, it won't fit. And the volume and the setup, you just can't get the flow. So I have to find another place. Now, do I let the cat out of the bag or do I really worry about it? I mean, so I believe from the bottom of my heart that you people are being held hostage. And I believe that by, and none other than the postmaster from Pueblo. She didn't like the idea that you guys complained about, I say you guys, obviously you know I'm talking about Pueblo. Complained about the previous post office situation. Then when she decided to shut down because she was getting zero support from Pueblo or the USPS. Then they took it to the truck over by the swimming pool. That lasted, what, three days? It was hot as can be. You couldn't find packages. It was a small truck. Barely could find mail. People complained about that. It was so hot, they were getting sick. So they shut that down without saying much of anything. And all the, all the way, not just to a post office in Pueblo, but clear across town. That's a 64-mile round trip. At $5 a gallon, that's a $20 trip to pick up junk mail, right? I mean, unless you knew that there was something there. So I'm in agreement with like 99% of the people who walked in there saying that this town deserves its own post office. But the reason, part of the reason is that the city is not its own incorporated scenario. And I believe part of that is that in that incorporation process, you would have a dedicated some level of police protection or some level of fire protection for the facility. You can make an argument for it or against it and compare it to the same thing that's going on in Pueblo West. They too are Metro District, right? But they have a post office. And I don't know whether that's just a satellite or if it's actually a post office with a postmaster or assistant postmaster or whatever. I'm not sure how to tell you to find it. I've never run a post office before. I've never been involved in a post, but I've run process flows and project management for years and years and years. So it's kind of coming as natural. But I believe, I believe that you guys are being held hostage. Now that, well, that's a bold statement, I'm sure.
So is Post Office following the laws that they're supposed to be? I'm saying they're not.
So as far as, that's a gray one. Because as far, well, as far as my contract goes, they failed. So I'm going to be pushing that issue. I sent an email off. I'm not going to fill you in all the detail because it could be kind of silly. But I sent an email off Sunday saying that my contract with you for the CPU said that this would be provided, this, and this, and this, and this, and none of it has been. I can't even tell you when I'm going to get paid from that, right? And so, so all the money that's coming out so far has just come out of my pocket. So I sent an email and I told them that you've got this week. That by the end of the week, that you haven't met, corrected these five things, I'm going to hand you the keys and walk away. That means you guys are going to have another break. And because you're being held hostage, you'll be going back to North, hell, you may even have to go to Colorado Springs, as far as I know, pick up your mail. So I'm telling you upfront, not a good situation. So I don't know what kind of, what kind of contacts you guys have in the postal world, in the state level. This is your post office. This is your mail. These are your packages. I can't believe what somebody bought on a regular basis, by the way. But the point is, it doesn't have to be like this. It shouldn't be like this. So at the whim of one person, whoever has ticked whoever off, there it is. That's why you're living with what it is. It's an individual. And it's a local individual. It's not, the people in Denver, they have no idea we even exist, right? They don't care. We're just a drop in the water, right, in the bucket.
Well, I know that Lou, when he was running it, I met him since I retired in 1999. But he was always bitching that he couldn't get a good enough deal, couldn't get enough money for running that.
Right.
That was, that was his big complaint. He would tell anybody to walk in there, but you know, he was here for a long, long time.
In 30-some years, I understand.
All right.
And hats off to him for doing it. But he had other resources that he could cover that, you know, that lack of funding, right? But, and he did it for the loads of people. And from the reception that I had, man, I do it, I do it too. Except, except this payroll thing, you know, when your minimum wage is twice, three times what it was when we were kids, it's a lot. It is difficult. And I don't want to leave those people hanging. So I've told them, and there's just three of them right now, of this scenario. I just, I didn't want to be surprised. So I don't know what I, all I'm doing here, I think at this point, is just reporting. I'm not asking for anything. But I'm just reporting the situation that I'm finding myself in. And as you're walking in and telling me, hey, this is missing or this isn't happening, there's nothing I can do about it. I mean, I can do it, but I can't.
So I would suggest, my wife is doing it, I'm doing it. You need to somehow get this out to everybody in the community. And you would be the perfect person to get it out to everybody. Just tell everybody to email our House Representative and our two senators. They can control the post office. They start making phone calls to the postmaster general, and things will happen. But they can't get one or two emails.
Well, can't make, I want to do this. It really shouldn't be an email. Whenever you're, whenever you're being asked to sign an electronic petition, they mean nothing. They are, they can be counterfeited so easily. But if you put a form out there and you print it and mail it, not through the USPS, but I mean, I'm sorry. If you mail it, it's got your, it's got your ink on it. And then they have to pay attention.
They do pay attention to emails, or at least Bullbird does. Because Bullbird actually called me for an email.
Okay, good, good.
So they do pay attention to emails. But the thing is though, is that they need to get more than five or six or 12 emails. They need to get 5,000 emails. And it needs to be from 5,000 different people.
What's, what's our community population? Somewhere close to 3,000, all right?
3,000.
All right. And when you go over to Rye, they got, what, two hundred, three hundred people, right? They don't have to do this. But if I, so I've got a website out there that I could put a form on, to have it, to have you copy it, enter your email, and then send it off. I'm fine with doing that. But I don't know if I'm the one to call the arms, because I am in the middle, I've got another bone to pick. So it really ought to be, maybe you, here, right?
We have to be careful. It shouldn't be CCMD, but should, could be somebody from, on the CCMD, one of the individual.
Why wouldn't it be?
Why can't it be you guys? I was, I was told by Bullbird's office that it should be you guys.
Well, I can probably individually, but as individually...
As a board, they said.
As a board and individually. I mean, that's how I see it, but that's, you guys make that decision. And if you'd like, I can, I can put a form out on, and I bring my business cards, I call it, I got them on the counter if you want to stop in. But, but the website is there, and I can put that, I can put a form out there, and then you guys do what you want. Download it, fill it out, put it on the email.
And I got nothing against, I mean, I think we could probably, as a board, put out...
If we decided to ask for...
If we decided as a board to put out a, to send a letter to all three of them, and the postmaster general, with our endorsement. But, but it's going to be more effective. So, one thing I've learned about politicians, okay, is one or two people they don't pay attention to. But they start getting a bunch of people, squeaky wheel gets the grease. They start getting a bunch of people, they'll listen.
Could Terry in his paper put in a form with that little bit of information to ask the people to send it?
I could. I tried to talk to this man for the last three days.
I don't, I don't even know where my head is, I don't even know if I'm here. But, it, I mean, is your paper ready to go, ready for print?
It's done for this week.
That's your thirteen-hundred, okay? Because I could, I could insert something into each mailbox. But that, but people only come once a week, right? You're about to have interrupted service again on Saturday.
If they don't fix it.
If they don't fix things, right? And, so here's the deal, I sent an email off to the person who I communicated with to get the contract. I had not heard from, I had not heard from the postmaster from Pueblo, who I'm supposed to be working through, since the day she left on Friday, Thursday, of the thirtieth of June. Except for yesterday morning, after I had sent that email, she said, hey, how are things doing, going? And then she says, by the way, you can't change your hours without my approval. And I, I had other things in my mind to say, but it didn't happen. And, but I didn't, I didn't dignify her response with a response. I'm not going to work with her. If she walks in here, I'm taking her out.
So, it sounds to me like the fundamental issue is she's not upholding her side of bargain.
Well, that's where I'm going to work on my side, all right? That's, that's my contract issue. You guys are getting your mail, not, not great.
Actually, it's pretty good.
I was going to say, better than it was.
Well, here, but here's, here's a part, here's a piece of it, that, you know, this scanner thing, and I have to do a scan, and then I know I'm taking a time with some detail that probably missed, or, you know, this scanner, that I have to scan it in, that it shows to arrive, and you get your message saying, hey, your package is here. Since the first of July, my scanners have not updated the system once. All that data of your package is here, your package has been picked up, your package has been mailed, is all setting on my scanners. Hasn't gone out to the world to tell your customers that your package is on the way. Or that you, they, you have received their package, same. None of them. And that, anyway, that's, that's...
That's one of the things I'd like to commend him on, is at least he is trying to work with the community, has changed his hours, because there's people that don't get up working in Pueblo until five o'clock, and at least it gives them a half hour to get down here to, within that hour, on two days a week, and stuff like that. So in summary of all this though, is that we need to get a hold of our representatives and...
That they need to be aware, like, pretty quick.
Is your, the regional that you deal with, is she out of Wyoming?
No, in Denver. So I think this person has the Denver, sorry, not Denver, Colorado, Wyoming region, yeah. And, and I can provide that name, but, you know, I suppose I'm here to say it's going to happen if it doesn't happen. And I'm okay with questions, any questions, please?
Neil?
Yes?
I don't think it hurts when they, when the legislature meeting starts for the more big actions, and they make a motion to pursue this as a CCMD that wasn't really a volunteer.
I do love the business.
Well, yeah, we can, new business then, Harry.
Yeah. Because I think the more, if they can do it, but I think we as a board need to do it to make it really also important.
All right. Point taken. Thank you.
So I'll just leave that alone, but I'll come back at another time if all these things get resolved and I'm still around. Then we'll have to talk about facility or some arrangement to make somehow. All right?
All right, thanks.
Thanks, everybody. Oh, I'm sorry.
Jim, what's next?
Okay, what I have next is CCAAC review. Oh, I'm sorry.
On the CCAAC, we have eight first letters, five second letters, six third letters. It is going to cost us money because of the third letter this time. We need to get out, we are getting it. You probably don't sign that spreadsheet, but most of these issues have at least been addressed the first time. So, we're going to start to catch up. I think we have a fund of systems to do that. And then we have two new contracts, forty-five to drive is garage, and forty-one to five dealer. Both of those have been checked by going to this, and recommend they be approved as well. I also am going to recommend that the board authorize a cease and desist letter to the campers on the land. I think that the covenants through the archetypal community, the covenants are an issue, we'd probably opt to pursue.
So, man?
You may.
So on the cease and desist letter, should we, we should probably ask the sheriff to do it, shouldn't we?
Yes. At least to be an assistance check. We have to announce some of these studies, actually. That's it for study session? I can use the hammer?
Yep.
All right. Close the study session, open the revenue meeting, the board directors at six, oh, for July twenty-fourth, twenty-two, the general and president.
General and president to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And, my former asylum question, so please. We have a full forum, we have a board in person and hearing by phone. So, we're open to public hearing.
Okay, we have a public hearing to propose amendments to rules and regs sixteen point two point three on licensed vehicles authorizing use of off-highway vehicles on Colorado City roads. There is copies of the resolution back on the table there. Do you want me to go ahead and read the whole resolution here?
Does the public wish that it be read? We have copies of it that, which are welcome, read tonight. If you prefer it be read, we will. Anybody want it to be read?
Could you give a short synopsis?
Sure. Resolution number zero eight dash two zero two-two, resolution amending rules and regs to authorize the use of off-highway vehicles on Colorado City metro roads. The board hereby amends section sixteen point two point three on the rules and regs of section sixteen point two on parks, greenbouts, and open spaces as follows. New language, unlicensed vehicles, unlicensed vehicles including dirt bikes shall be prohibited from traveling, traveling within the boundaries of all Colorado City parks, greenbelt, and open spaces unless operated on district-owned roads in accordance with all requirements of section sixteen point six point three. The board hereby approves an amendment of its rules and regs to adopt a new section, sixteen point six point three, unlicensed vehicles, which shall read in entirety as follows. Off-road vehicles, operation of off-road vehicles and golf carts is permitted on district-owned roads by licensed drivers in strict compliance with all requirements set forth in this section, sixteen point six point three, and all regulations and other requirements of section thirty-three, fourteen point five, dash one, zero, one, Colorado revised statute. All such operations shall be at the operator's risk, and the district assumes no liability related thereto. The following definition applies, off-road vehicles means any south profiled vehicle that is designed to travel on roads or tracks in contact with ground that is designed primarily for the use of off, of the public highway, and that is generally and commonly used to transport persons for recreational purposes. Off-highway vehicles include ATVs, altering vehicles, but does not include the following. Vehicles designed and used specifically to transport disabled persons, vehicles designed and used specifically for lawn care, agricultural, logging, and mining purposes, none of those. Golf carts means a south profiled vehicle not designed primarily operational roadways in that it has a design speed of less than twenty miles per hour. At least three wheels in contact with ground, and empty weight of not more than one thousand three hundred pounds, and a carrying capacity of not more than four persons, as it amending. District road, reading means a public street or road owned by the district. See Metro District Office for a map of district-owned roads. It is responsibility of the operator of any OHV or golf cart to make sure they are on a district-owned road. Required equipment and conditions, headlights, taillights, and front and rear running lights must be illuminated in working condition on any OHV or golf cart operated between one half hour after sunset and one half hour before sunset. If the vehicle is not equipped with the above mentioned lights, then operation of the vehicle during the above mentioned time is strictly prohibited, and lockers can only use the vehicle during daylight hours, and must always use the appropriate hand signals for all traffic maneuvers. Regardless of whether the vehicle contains a required lights, there shall be no operation of OHV or golf carts between hours of nine PM and six AM. Seat belts shall be worn if the vehicle has them as standard equipment. Every passenger must have the designated seat, no sitting on cargo racks, or standing, or leaning boards, or foot pegs if it is permitted. All Colorado laws opposing minimum safety and equipment standards for the operating of the OHV and the golf cart on a public street or roadway shall be complied with, and it is responsibility of the operator of such vehicle to ascertain and comply with said laws. A fluorescent red-orange safety flag will be affixed to the rear of any OHV or golf cart five foot to seven foot above the ground, and must be displayed at all times the vehicle is operated on district grid.
Sixteen six dot three dash three dash three, insurance. Before operating any of the OHVs or golf carts on the public, 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 not Pueblo streets, public streets or roadways of the district, the owner shall obtain a carry and carry liability insurance policy issued by an insurance carrier authorized to do business in the state of Colorado, which covers the operation of said OHVs or golf carts on public streets. The minimum coverage shall be twenty-five thousand for damage to property of others, twenty-five thousand for damages for, or on account of bodily injury or death of one person as a result of any one accident, and subject to such limit as to one person, a minimum sum of fifty thousand dollars, for, or on account of bodily injury, to, or death of all persons as a result of any one accident. Section B, the operator of an OHV or golf cart shall be required to carry proof of registration insurance while operating the vehicle, and may be required to present proof of registration and insurance to district representatives or law enforcement agents. Sixteen dot six dot three dot four, traffic regulation. The operation of OHVs or golf carts on State Highway one sixty-five east and west is strictly prohibited. However, these vehicles are allowed to cross the highways and recognize at grade intersections with local streets, provided, provided that, first point, the crossing must be made at an angle of approximately ninety degrees to the direction of the highway, and at a place where no obstruction prevents the quick and safe crossing. The off-highway vehicle must be brought to a complete stop before crossing the shoulder, or if none, the roadway before proceeding. The driver must yield the right-of-way to all motor vehicle traffic on the roadway that constitutes an immediate hazard to the crossing. The driver of an off-highway vehicle must cross a divided highway at an intersection of the highway with another road or highway. Section B, unlawful acts. It shall be unlawful for any person to operate an OHV or golf car on any street within the boundaries of the district where, one, the operator does not have in his possession a valid, current, and unrevoked driver's license. Two, the operator does not have current insurance coverage as provided in section insurance. Three, the vehicle is not equipped for use as described in section sixteen dot six dot three dot two, required equipment and conditions. Four, the operation of the vehicle is prohibited during the time periods specified in section sixteen dot six dot three dot two, required equipment and conditions. Five, the operator fails to observe all vehicle and traffic laws and regulations, except when those provisions cannot reasonably be applied to OHV and golf cart operation. Six, all alcohol and drug-related vehicle violations shall be enforced in accordance with Colorado laws. Seven, registration, licensing, and insurance requirements of OHVs operated on public streets and roadways imposed by Colorado law shall be complied with prior to operating said vehicles. It is the responsibility of the owner and or operator of the vehicle to ascertain and comply with said laws. Section C, reporting accidents. As required by section thirty-three dash fourteen point five dash one thirteen of Colorado Revised Statutes, the operator of an OHV involved in an accident resulting in property damage of fifteen hundred dollars or more, or injuries resulting in hospitalization or death, or some person acting for the operator or the owner of the OHV having knowledge of the accident, shall immediately by quickest available means of communication, notify an officer of Colorado State Patrol, the sheriff's office of the county wherein the accident occurred, or the office of the district wherein the accident occurred. Hit it, Jim.
Okay. Sixteen point six point three point five, enforcement. Any violation of traffic laws or this Colorado City Metro District rule will be enforced by Pueblo Sheriff's Department and State Patrol. It may be subject to civil... and may be subject to civil or criminal penalties or by a property owner in the event of trespass of private property. Number three, effective date. The Colorado City Board of Directors hereby defines and finds that to promote the prosperity and improve the comfort and convenience of Colorado City Metro Police District and its inhabitants and to best serve the immediate preservation of public safety, welfare, and interests of Colorado City Metro District and its inhabitants, these rules amendments shall become effective immediately upon adoption by the Board of Directors. The district manager is directed to update the rules and post an updated version of the district website. If any, if any portion of the rule is found to be unconstitutional, invalid, or void for any reason, it shall be deemed served that from, served from this resolution, such decision shall not affect the constitutionality or validity of the remaining portions of this resolution and the remaining portions shall remain valid and enforced in effect. Colorado City Board of Directors hereby declares that it would have passed its rule in each part of the, or parts thereof, regardless of the fact that any one part or parts may be declared unconstitutional or invalid. That's kind of a summary, but over summarized.
Let's mature.
Input, inputs on the phone.
So who's going to enforce these rules when these kids go blasting up and down the street through the, through the fields? Is it up to the metro or is it up to the board or is it up to the sheriff's department?
The sheriff's department and the state patrol.
So they're not down here very often?
All of us, they're still doing it already. They're already doing it. It's up to, they already enforce it when they catch it. This doesn't change anything.
This just, so this is.
They just get to do whatever they want until they get caught.
All right, it is, just like the resolution says, it would be up to the sheriff's department and the state patrol. And, and of course, if it's trespass, it should be up to the citizen to call, sheriff's department, state patrol. Any input? Board? Okay, so much of the public hearing. Of course, public hearing, go back to the record hearing, and we need to put up agenda.
Chairman, I'm going to approve tonight's.
I'll second that.
Board in second. All favors say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Uh, we have a agenda. Minutes? Did I get it? Post on minutes.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of the regular meeting July twelfth, twenty twenty-two. MCCAC, CC minutes, July twenty-first, twenty twenty-two.
I would like to amend that if, if you okay, the minutes I stated, Mr. Hopst, that was in on the Zoom meeting, and we need to change that to Mr. Cropp. No, it was, it was heavy. On the Zoom meeting?
Yeah.
I was heavy. I'm saying.
I was on the, I was on the.
Oh, it says I was?
No. It said very well.
It was, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Are you sure? This Zoom meeting, but, uh, okay. I was withdrawing my amendment. So we need a second. Board in second, all favors say aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Minutes approved. Bills paid.
Bills paid, well, it's in your check register, it's in your book.
Questions from board?
Do you want to make a motion first?
Yeah.
I make a motion that we pay the bills.
I'll second the motion. Board in second, discussion?
Uh, if I may. So, repair to Cassell, printing issues, ADM. Very first page.
Which one we talked about?
Very bottom, very first page.
Okay. Executec?
Yes.
You want on that one?
Um, I had to pull bill, but it was more than that. I mean, there's only so much space she has in here, but they did help us with a few issues. Also, um, a sequel update to Cassell. There were multiple issues on that one.
We had backup problems.
Um. None of our files were, it was failing the backup to the cloud, so they worked on that a couple of times. But, um, there's, she can't put all of that data in that line item.
So, I mean, it seems like there's, there's been several, to me anyway, there's been several charges from Cassell. For some stuff that I, is this operator error on our part? Or is this stuff that's wrong with their program and they're charging us to fix their program?
No, the backup to the cloud is going to fail every now and then. Um, if there's any kind of break fix they have to do or reprogramming of our system to fix something, that's normal, it's just expensive. So we try to limit our calls to them and, um, the sequel update we needed for Cassell to update correctly until they rolled out their version, their new, new version.
And Executec, Executec, if you go back through your bills, I think normally we're paying sixteen dollars or.
It's monthly, we pay them about a hundred and sixty-four dollars. That includes our security, um, our backup to the cloud, and it's based on how many, I don't know, it's gigabytes, megabytes, how much we are using and backing up. Uh, we also had like a bill for training that was over six hundred dollars. Um, that was a virtual, virtual training. Um, we'll have two of those.
So the virtual training, I understand that. That's training, I'll get that. But, um, you know, I've got a couple of programs in my business that I subscribe to and they don't charge me when their program screws up. I call customer support, they fix their program, I pay my monthly fee. I mean, is it because it's a government, is it because they serve the government that they get the gouges?
No.
No, and usually what, what it is is kind of that bridge. Executec's over here, Cassell's over there. Executec is the one that allows whoever needs to get into our system. And that's what it was, was Executec is more or less going in and repairing to allow Cassell to come in without the problems. Uh, it could be something on our side that wasn't updated to receive Cassell's through so-called in our, our internet.
So it's our server that they're backing up. Our, they've already told us our server is old, which I'm not sure when we purchased it, but I don't know if that's the problem, um, but for some reason it doesn't work up. It's probably once every eight months.
Okay. Any questions? I have a concerning thing, I guess, about, about the gas at the golf course. What are we, what are we doing on a golf course?
Yeah, that's fifteen hundred bucks.
No, that's, that's your call. Golf course, golf course was sixty-eight.
Four hundred.
Four hundred and eleven dollars, fifty-seven cents.
Okay. I don't know. I know the.
You got a leak there.
Yeah, I know, I know what that one, the last one was because the door was opening, the doors. Really open the door, cool off, good, so. We fixed that, we got the door fixed and, and so I don't know whether it was in between that or not. I'll have to check. I'll have to see why.
So whose problem?
No, the door, the door check on it wasn't working to close the door. So the door would stay open and then.
Anyway, if you were to check out, there's, in the summertime, there's.
Yeah, should we? I'm sure that.
Because that would raise our electric bill in the summertime, wouldn't it?
No.
For the air conditioning?
We, we have swamp coolers.
So.
Just one, a lot of.
A is a common sport. So let's pay the bills. We have a discussion, Harry?
No, any checks at all.
Let's go, let's go. All favors pay bills?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, let's pay the bills. Financial report?
Okay, you have your, uh, financial report, you're back. We are moving up, back into where we were supposed to be. The only one that we're still in the hole is property management. It's because we haven't sold too much property this year compared to any other accounts.
Questions, comments from board? Okay. Next is, uh, operational. To look under, uh, oh, let's go with CCMD directors first.
Okay. Community reports, I guess it's director's reports. That's kind of confusing.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I got it backwards. That would be my guys. Community, community reports.
We need the community reports, I don't know what.
All right, Beckwith, DAM report. Uh, I have put in your, uh, yell section six. I have put in the emails from Gregor and, uh, Mr. Perry. Thank you, Jim and Mike, for coordinating the board's selection of Alternative Two for the Beckwith DAM rehab and the engineering's still up there. I'm glad things are moving forward. Jim, it sounds like you have a plan for coordinating with grants and loan parties as soon as you have really listed tasks and dates for both the engineering for Mike's email below and financing. Please coordinate with me about renegotiating DAM safety device plan. Thank you, don't hesitate to contact me if you have any questions. Uh, as for Mr. Gregor, thanks for the update. As discussed, we will move forward with Alternative Two, widening the dam and bank for a future ten-floor raise. As the preferred alternative modified to include the full design plans, specs, specifications for completion of the ten-floor raise should funds become available to do so. We should be able to wrap up the feasibility study, have it ready to submit to CWCB in about a month and a half for their review approval. Uh, since feasibility study, study is complete, we have prepared a proposal for completing the full design plans, specifications for both lining and bankment of ten-floor raise and raise the dam to a certain height. The lining will be, uh, referred to as Phase One dam safety improvements and Phase Two will be raising the dam and enlarging the reservoir. This approach will allow the work to be constructed in two phases or have both phases constructed simultaneously should sufficient funds be available to construct both phases. Completing the full design, uh, plans, specifications for both phases will require approximately six months. Once the board approves the proposal, once the detailed design is completed and submitted to the state engineer, they have, have up to six months to approve the design for bidding and construction. Below is an appropriate time schedule for our portion of the project moving forward. September fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, RJH will submit the feasibility study to CWCB for their review and approval. Uh, September fifteenth, RJH will submit a full design proposal to CCMD board for the review and authorization to do the work until we go through detail the scope of work for Phase One and Phase Two design. We won't have a cost estimate for this work, but I expect it to be in the three hundred and fifty to four hundred thousand dollar range. The design cost will be your next big funding need to move the project forward. If funding for the design phase is not available, the October first start date for the work will be extended until funding is available and will extend the proposed timeline for project completion. October first, twenty twenty-two, CCMD authorizes RJH to move forward with the prepared detailed designs, plans, and specifications for Phase One and Phase Two. April first of twenty twenty-three, RJH completes the design of Phase One and Phase Two, submits to SEO for their review and approval. September first of twenty twenty-three, SEO approves Phase One, Phase Two design. October first, twenty twenty-three, bidding and procurement of obtaining a contractor to construct Phase One as a minimum and potentially Phase Two if funding is sufficient to do so. November fifteenth, construction contract awarded to the lowest qualified bidder. December first, notice to proceed with construction to the contractor. Uh, June first of twenty twenty-four, completion of Phase One. December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, completion of Phase Two. May first of twenty twenty-five, construction completion, documents submitted to SEO, final acceptance of SEO, which will allow full reservoir storage. The proposed schedule is aggressive but realistic if project can be funded in a timely manner. Delays in obtaining the necessary funds will certainly extend the schedule. As you need technical support for grounds of loan applications, please contact me for assistance with these efforts. If you have any questions, contact me at any time. I look forward to working with you, your staff, and CCMD board towards a success completion of the project. With that, I have put in the weekly inspections. Greg will get the ones for this week, probably tomorrow or Thursday. Uh, he did perom, uh, perimeter, uh, last, last Thursday.
Yeah.
For the month, and I also put in the perimeter for the one that he did on the twenty-first. So we are keeping up on a regular schedule as to weekly inspections and perimeter.
Jim, if you would read that, and, and, please, please. So what, we just wanted the weekly dam inspection down.
Okay, weekly dam inspection, uh, for seven thirteen twenty-two was fourteen feet point, fourteen point two, uh, feet at the lake. The four-inch, uh, release was dry, the six-inch, uh, was leaking, uh, point seven five gallons a minute. Uh, seat was down, rear was at point one six, and pit was dry. I'm the, also, please on if you would. Last, last week's, uh, ground reading, uh, readings, uh, under P one and two, they were dry. Under P three, uh, that is no longer in service. P four was twenty-one point two feet. Uh, P eleven, which is twelve point four. P five was eighteen point nine. P six was twenty-three point six. P twelve was twenty-two point four. Thank you. Okay, other operational?
Yeah.
All right, let's, uh, let's go to committee reports. Sheriff's report.
We're still trying to narrow it down.
I'm still trying to narrow it down. So Terry and I, Terry knows more about it, just reaching out to the project manager. If they can give us an idea. So nice to go out.
And, um, and all, all I, all I need is to get a conference with those two board members. It's too windy to check for smoke signals, but I think that's just. My report, I guess, is I've just gone from talking to Jim about the, of course, the project on the dam. And I, I, you just read that, yeah, so. We have probably a meeting there. How about you, uh? Tap fees?
Okay, so I just did a little bit of research. Basically, um, from the time we passed him, I was talking to Jim, and to the current date. Let me pull it up here, I made a little note here, because I can't remember nothing. Right here. So from the, from the time we passed the last tap fee increase to today's date, with inflation, just inflation, we should go up to eighteen thousand seven to keep it current. Okay, because this market has become a little bit hotter due to, um, Queblos West and the moratorium. Um, I kind of think we should be on par with Queblos West. So my recommendation at this time would be twenty thousand dollars of tap fees. Now, I would suggest that we break that up instead of evenly like we have in the past, that we break it up to eleven thousand dollars towards water and nine thousand dollars towards sewer. And the reason why I recommend that is because my personal feelings are is we need more money towards the water infrastructure than we do towards the sewer infrastructure, especially with these grants, with the dam and stuff like that, we're gonna need this extra money for these capital projects.
What about these asbestos lines that you're still using for water lines?
So all this stuff goes towards capital projects, including lines, everything else. It goes towards all of them.
I asked a guy that was working on the lines, uh, why they're still using asbestos, and he goes, well, he's beating a hole in mine tapping. He goes, as long as you don't disturb it, there's no problems.
That's, that's part of our infrastructure repair.
Part of our infrastructure.
Not tap fees. Okay, anything else on that? That kind of where you're at?
That's where I'm at on that, because I think we should raise them to twenty grand.
Okay, what would be, of course, a public hearing?
Yeah.
If we were to take action on that, so right now, it's just a good little report, we'll have to take action, and then all the action portions.
Yeah, because we'd have to set this up for a public hearing in thirty days.
So, Terry, you want to make your recommendation, huh?
Sure. Because I've been investigating this a little bit, and by the fortitude of my reporting, when I was just a rookie. I would, I would like to ask the chair to dedicate a committee to specifically focus on the project manager. One of the things is that I got out of the Zoom conference with the, uh, the state and county and local individuals involved in the repair of the dam. That that position, that person could probably do more to smooth out the project than anyone else. Those of you who are involved in the Zoom meeting, remember that Pueblo County is working on a proposal to basically provide project managers, but if I remember correctly, the earliest that would occur would be first quarter or second quarter of next year. And it hasn't been funded yet. So I think we need a committee to keep up top of all of that and explore any other alternatives we might have. If that doesn't look good, because it's a government program. And I just feel like the number one priority of our district right now is the repair of that dam. And on all the priorities we have. I think we should be paying, uh, that we should give that priority that kind of individual to.
So are you willing to lead that committee?
I am, as long as I don't have to discipline myself.
We can talk about it.
Everybody, sir, thank you.
And Sarah, you and Harry are on the utility director committee? Yeah, and Bradley, you didn't serve on both of them.
Okay.
I can, I can serve them.
If you would work with it, with Terry?
Yeah.
So when I appoint you and Terry to work on a, uh, work another project, Matthew, specifically, and actually to work with, I think, is it Adam, the state, on that program?
Matt.
Matt. On that program, that's kind of how that's what you told me.
Okay.
And then you and Harry to be the utility director. That will actually make both of you then kind of focus a little bit on, on a specific type of.
I, I did have something under, uh, kind of operational. But we did get the big package in for all of our ARBA. It's sitting around the table, it has been, uh, put out to bid. It was advertised the last two weeks in our paper at. Yeah, Thursday will be the third, they will be opening it up, I think, August eight. The bids in Colorado Springs at GMS. So, and with that, that's two miles of line which, talking about AC lines. We replaced the red cloud and also the telly lake and our two water tanks. So we're just, we're moving forward.
And kind of, as you talked about the asbestos, that would be some of that.
Okay, good.
You know, do we got an ETA on when they're breaking ground on the water lines?
No, I don't. Like you said, it's, it all depends upon materials too. One of the biggest things is, right now, I'm talking to Ken White, the engineer. He says finding valves is the hardest part. They had trouble finding lines before, but now it's the valves that.
So everything's insured, so.
And the water, which is not working out too well.
So, okay, that's it for the committee reports?
Yes.
All right, I'm gonna read the biggest statement. In order for the business of the board to be conducted in the most effective and expeditious manner, it is necessary that all persons present maintain a demeanor of civility toward the board, staff, and each other. Conduct that appears threatening or aggressive will not be tolerated. Shouting, speaking out of order, or using offensive gestures similarly are not acceptable. Such behaviors shall constitute the forfeiture of your right to remain in attendance and may, as a point of order brought to board's attention by counsel or any board member, including the chairperson, result in or being asked to leave the meeting by the chairperson or, upon refusal, being escorted out of the meeting by the proper authority. Okay, Jim, Mike.
Okay.
So we have a bunch of.
First I have on the list is Dennis. And that's enough.
And I've only got two things, it's.
Hey, we're, we're not gonna lie.
First one is, um, you said last meeting that you're gonna have to check with an attorney as far as disclosing who, uh, files complaint? Did you check with the attorney yet?
Yes, as far as actually written, uh, I don't think we have that. But what it ends up being is we become the complainer.
Yeah, I knew that, but.
That's, that's who you face, is us, we become the complainer. So if we, if we don't require names or, if it's anonymous to complain, then basically what it is, is learning about us of a complaint. We need to check out the complaint and see if it's legitimate. If it is legitimate, then we become the complainer.
So my request is denied, basically.
Beyond us, yes. Your request to confront your complainer is, is not denied because you confront us.
Well, the, the actual complainer that was still hidden.
Could be hidden from us.
Yeah. Okay. All right, my last, my, my other one, I don't like that answer, but, uh, I, I'm curious, did you have to check with an attorney to institute this policy?
I, I just basically had a short conversation about it.
When they, when they first instituted it?
Oh, no.
Oh, they didn't check with an attorney then? Huh. Did you have to, to, okay. Um, my other one is the burn pile thing.
At this point, we have Pueblo County. They are supposed to be down here Monday to chip all that wood that's out in the ballpark.
Are they gonna do that, or?
Yeah.
Oh, they are?
Pueblo County Run Bridge is going to do all the chipping.
Oh.
And if you want wood chips, you're welcome to, the community's welcome to pick them up. If they aren't, then I guess we're gonna spread them out in our park.
Okay, back to my original question, how about the burn pile?
Burn pile, at this point in time, I don't have a definite answer for you because I'm waiting to see how it goes. But when they're gonna start that up, because we can't have people in there while they're rushing, so that's kind of waiting on that aspect.
Okay, I just wondered, because some people have contacted me for some stupid reason, asking me about it, but.
You know, if they can get their stuff down there while it's still there before they chip, they can still.
Well, I could probably haul it for them.
And like you said, as long as it isn't bigger than six inches. Right, I think we can live with that.
That's, that's a good rule, okay, all right.
Who's next, Jim?
Okay, next, I have Daryl.
Yeah, uh, my name's Daryl Rainey. I live forty-six seventy-two Santa Fe Drive. And my house, that must, the greenbelt on the old west course. And I can look down on the pond that was the ninth hole on the old west course. A little background on the muscicle problem on the old ninth hole west course. The course was closed around six years ago. At that time, the CCMD board guaranteed me that they would mow that a minimum of twice a year. And at that time, I went, I went to about every meeting you guys ever had. And to my knowledge, I know it hasn't been mowed twice in those six years. And the musc, the muscicle is considered a noxious weed in the state of Colorado as well as in Pueblo County. And by law, the noxious weeds must be controlled. And if isn't done, the, in order to control them, it will be at the expense of the offending party, which would be Colorado City, because they're not taking care of this Colorado city's property. I talked to Jim in two thousand twenty and twenty-one regarding mowing the thistles and other weeds on the course. But basically, nothing's been done, such as mowing or spraying. He did tell me he was gonna get hold of the public community and see if I sprained it. Now, my personally, personal, uh, use of the, of the weed spray, there was a guy here in Colorado City that done a lot of landscape work, and I talked to him about it. And in the greenbelt that, that's my property, there was the muscils. And they were in bloom, probably just opened up. And this had been a number of years ago. I used to spread this side on them in the morning, and by night, they were laying on the ground, and they never did come back. But I did give the board, and I'm hoping that Jim, that you got it, information on controlling those weeds. And my wife pulled it up off the internet. Now, they don't mention specticide in there, but they do mention other weed killers. And the problem with the muscicle, it ain't gonna go away. And in time, it'll be up there in my backyard, and I don't want that. And I don't think I should have to put up with it. And I've been messing with this problem for a number of years. When the west course was going, Greg Bailey, I think, is here. I took care of that west course for more than two and a half years. I mowed the fairways and the rough. The only thing people was working on, the maintenance people, people that done the mowing, done was, was greens and tea boxes. And I done that in no more than three days. So in order to just mow that course, of course, you know, you've let it go wide. So it, so it'll take probably more than three days to knock all that stuff down. But I think you'd have to check into it. But I think what you should do, if you, when you cut all that muscils, I would like you board members go, go out there and go around that course. They're on my side of the pond, which is on the north side. And then there's all kinds of them out there, all around the course. And they're, they're progressing. And, you know, you can set your up, self up where, you know, I get, I've, I've been in contact with weed people in the past. I haven't, since I started noticing this problem, and that's why I come to Jim, is, you know, take care of the problem. Don't just not do it, because it's your responsibility. Right, Jim?
Mm-hmm. Last year, last year, we did mow it twice. It wasn't mowed twice. This year, they started to mow it, and they got, they didn't go as far back in as what I wanted them to do.
Well, you guys need to go down there and just take a look, just put down there in front of that pond. They're all in full bloom. Do you know if, uh, because those seeds, they spread like sun will go. And do you know if it would be good idea to burn them? I think it would. And I don't think you would have any problems, because we're getting these monsoons coming in the afternoon. It's, that greenbelt is as green as I've seen it in the twenty-one years, twenty-two years I've lived here. It's really good.
So, we, without some of the weed.
Yeah, I, I have them on my list, and I'm gonna talk to Kelly about that.
Appreciate, I appreciate the information, though.
Thank you. Uh, because I know I contacted the people that we used to use to do it, and they're no longer in business if they won't.
Let's work on that. Okay, who's next?
Next, I have Dave. Always like to bring notes for you folks, so you can tell where I'm at at any given time. Thanks for getting. I like to talk about water, and I got to preface this by saying that I am encouraged by what I've heard tonight about getting some, maybe some asset management going and looking at what we've got, where we are. Uh, that's encouraging, and it looks like you're all working on at least parts of the program. But I've got about six or seven items, and there's, there's one in particular that I'll address, that I am concerned about, and I know the board is, and I think you all are, you, you just, you, you don't believe that there's a problem with, with overpopulation. Uh, I'd like to point out, and I have at the bottom of this, an article from the Pueblo Chief on dated seven fifteen that talks about the water situation in, in Pueblo West specifically. But you can see in there, I've underlined that the Pueblo Water Works is saying, these metropolitan areas that are gonna engage in irresponsible and reckless growth had better not depend on Pueblo to bail them out in case they get refined. Now, I don't think we're in very good shape to get bailed out, because as we found out last summer, we have to transport water by truck up here. And I, for one, I didn't have to do it last year, but I, for one, am not gonna be a happy camper if I have to start taking showers up in the homeless trailer at the, at the pool like was going on last year. And it wasn't a water shortage problem last year, I understand, and I think that's a, an indication. The growth I talked about, and I know the board has taken the position that we got plenty of water. I may be the only person in this room that's ever seen Lake Beck with the dry, and I have seen it dry, completely dry, you could drive across it in the nineteen fifties. It was like the Dust Bowl days. There was, there was an aircraft crashed during there that was spraying grasshoppers because it was so bad that year. So it did happen, and it has happened. So, it did happen, and it has happened. I have the dual now on here, and I see it's gonna be addressed later, uh, that's been something that been talked about in these meetings, time after time, and I keep reading and hearing that, well, the contractor can't get cars. I think we should only have to live with that so long, folks. Pretty soon, we're gonna have to find another contractor and get rid of the guy who can't find the cars. One of the items that I'm concerned about, for years since I've been here, we've talked about fifty percent water loss from what's treated in the treatment plants to what is sold. For the whole period of time, some fifteen, sixteen years, repeatedly, the position has been, the knee-jerk position has been, oh, it's bad water meters. We're giving water away, and we're not having to, people are not having to pay for it. But the bottom line of that was that we have always wanted remote read meters, so we could save a couple of bucks on, on having the guys go out and read meters, what, nine months a year? Because I think there would, we don't read them anyway. I think I heard tonight that this new system we've got that's remote costs probably more money to maintain and keep online than it would maybe send the guys out once a month to read meters. But we got all these remote read meters, and I have not heard if we've saved any money. I, I understand that we're billing the same amount. So, it didn't logically make sense that meters was a problem in the first place, not with that kind of a loss. But I think we've proved now, I, I believe, and I'd like to see some information put out to the public, have we really saved any money by spending? I wanna say from the numbers I've seen, we spent around seven hundred thousand dollars for those meters. Well, I hope there's a return on those, folks. Another one, and I'd like to see it addressed, is, and I, and I, again, I appreciate the position you're taking with the dam. But we've mandated that the dam is down one foot at this point by the state. I understood that in September, it's gotta drop another two feet. From the numbers I saw, I think that's something like sixty million gallons of water. Is there anything that's being done with, with the projects we've got going to convince the state, maybe, that we can use the, the extra, the extra stories that we do have in that dam? With all the building that we've been doing, it seems to me that you, you permit, I guess there's none on the, on the agenda tonight for change. But you've been approving a couple of new homes every meeting, meeting after meeting, and in the last year, there have been fifty, sixty new homes built in Colorado City. Every time I go around Colorado City, there's a new home being built somewhere. I know you love the money. You didn't, we talked about, sounds like some more, an additional, uh, cost for those meters and, and tap fees, but it seems to me with what we've sold, we should have collected something like a million dollars in fees for water and sewer taps. You've shaped your head, no, Greg? Fifty, fifty homes, have we not dealt fifty homes in Colorado City in the last year?
I don't want to slow things up, but what have we done this year?
Last year, I believe we had, uh, twenty-eight.
You're right for that, we have twenty-five.
Okay.
And this year?
So, I, I missed, I missed the number. So, instead of a million bucks, it's five hundred thousand. And that's allegedly supposed to be used for improvements of the water system. And, you know, the improvements we need right now is back with the dam, and I hope that that money has not just been flittered off each month as we did it, and that it's somewhere in, in an account, so that we can add it as a, as an add-on or a, or a fee for a, a, a bond, the matching funds for a bond.
Bro, lots of points, yeah.
And, and in closing, my point is, I think we need to consider very seriously some restraint. I'm not saying we have to completely stop growth, but I don't think that, I'm not trying to be selfish here, I'm trying to be practical. All of us in Colorado City have a big investment here, and I think that we need to use some, some common sense. Just tonight, I see a big thing about what's happening in, in Lake, Lake Mead. The city of Las Vegas gets ninety percent of their water from Lake Mead, and what's happened there is, is amazing. I mean, that lake is dropping so fast. I see where they're dr- they drained water out of, out of Blue Mesa Reservoir, they've drained water out of Flaming George Reservoir up in the Wyoming-Utah area, they're draining, uh, Navajo down in Mex- in New Mexico, to try to keep the turbines running in Lake Powell. Well, I think if the facts were known, that once that water goes through those turbines, it's gonna end up in Lake Mead, and, and that's gonna keep the swimming pools in the fountains going in Las Vegas. And I don't know what those people are gonna do, so I think we need to take a page, page out of that book and, and step back and say, let's look at this from a practical standpoint. There was an article in the Greenhorn Valley View just a week or so ago, and it talked about the baby steps you ought to take in to get the, the water system in a, in a reasonable position. I'd like to see a add to that, let's take some baby steps in expansion and, and building in Greenhorn Valley. Thank you.
Thanks. Just a quick response, and I think we just did a quick response, and I think that the public needs to know that we, part of the meeting tonight about the committees and the report Jim read to us about the, the issues with the dam, those are dealing with that extra two feet, we are working on saving that two feet. We are conscious of that, and, and working diligently to, to work to correct that issue. So, beyond that, if you'd like to discuss more of that after the meeting, the report must have been here.
Yeah, excuse me, could I just kick in with, with Dave?
Very quickly, sir.
Very quickly, when I moved here, we had a problem with leaks, and it's never been solved, and I don't know how many pence a million gallons of water is leaked out of the system. And that's the, that should be the number one damn priority, is get the damn leaks fixed, period.
Who's next?
Okay, Matt Smith, uh, Landra. I'd like to start by saying that I'm actually a Rye resident, I'm here on behalf of some friends of mine in Colorado City, who, because of the shifts they work, they can't be here today.
If you would come on up a little bit.
Certainly. So, I'm just going to present some information that I've gathered regarding the multiple campsites that have appeared around town, particularly one on in Landra. Um, it is, that property appears to be owned by a nonprofit organization out of California called the Schultz Corporation, Schultz Corp. It is apparently, from what I've found, a family slash church that travels around the country, offering homeless services and, uh, services to the needy. They do own that land, it was purchased in twenty twenty-one, transferred to them through, through a quick claim deed, transferred to that holding company through a quick claim deed, transferred to them from the person that actually bought it from CCMD. The nonprofit was started in twenty twenty, and they actually purchased that land from the previous holding company in twenty twenty-one. As far as I can see, they are offering services on their Facebook, such as, uh, selling hygiene bags, budget services, tax preparation services, health advice services, various different services, prices ranging from twenty-five to a hundred and fifty dollars an hour. And this is all just what I found on Facebook, they do not appear to have an official website in any capacity. I'm not going to read too much into the nature of the campsite itself, but as of right now, I counted three vehicles, an RV, and three tents. Beyond that, they have, from what I've heard, this is just anecdotal, but they have been taking pictures of vehicles that go past, and there have been a few shouting matches, folks. I have seen several people walking from the Greenhorn Campground up to their campsite, and I've seen a Facebook post on their page about how too many people are canceling consultations, it was only two days ago since that happened here. Beyond that, however, what concerns me more is the timing and the other two situations going on. The first being the aftermath of the sonic boom, as I'm sure most of us have heard directly, the sonic boom ended like last month. But after it did, quite a few people got left behind for one reason or another. Many of them made their way to the Greenhorn Campground, some have been staying around the valley, some have been staying in Greenbelt, on the interstate, I've heard lots of stories about that, but beyond that, I don't know the details of that situation. What I do know is that the campground's packed, and there is another sizable, from what I've heard, camp, I'm not sure if it's still there, I have very little information about it, it's off of Davis Road and I- twenty-five now, you know, it's outside Colorado State Street. This is, again, this information I'm gathering off the internet, Facebook, from what I've heard from people and from what I've looked it up on myself, yeah. So, that camp, from what I've heard, is actually on land that is for sale, is not owned by them, and there's been some parties and lots of tents and stuff like that going on. My other concern is that, and again, I'm just gonna throw my tinfoil cap on real quick, but it seems to me that there is a mass import of travelers and the facilities to support them, like two months before election in Lauren Moe's district. I don't know if I'm reading correctly to that, I'd like to believe I am, I'd like to believe everything's, it's been proven, that's just my random opinion that I'm throwing out. But as far as the stone cold facts, it does look very weird to me that a nonprofit from California bought two lots in Colorado City last year and is now paying off them, at the same time that we have all these other towns going through. But again, I just wanted to provide this information to the board so that they're all better equipped, I believe the, uh, cease and desist is probably a good idea, and I hope it is that simple.
Thank you. Jim, who's next?
That's allowed on my list.
Well, because we have an audience meeting, the others want to, we're having a small... Okay, let's, let's move on, Jim.
Mr. Chairman. Would I suggest that maybe you give them a page on exactly what we're doing up there on Landra? And we have a poll.
Yeah, we'll be, yeah, we'll be, uh, the, before anybody leaves, we do have the issue coming up with the cease and desist that we will be presenting to the folks on Landra. But that will be probably a covenants issue.
Can I ask what CCMD plans on doing when?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Can I ask what CCMD plans on doing when a cease and desist doesn't work for individuals who don't abide by laws and don't recognize them?
The same, we, we are also bound by laws, so unless we become vigilantes, we have, we leave them either. So, if, if they refuse to abide by a cease and desist or abide by conundrations or anything else, they have to go through the courts, and that's what we will do.
I got a question, sorry, I live up on Landra. So, that tells me that people that have no license plates, know nothing, yeah, they own the land, they can move in on, basically on their property with no billing permit, and it's okay? Yeah, it is, according to you guys, it is. So, what can we do to get them out? Absolutely nothing. That's what you're telling me, we have to wait. While we're waiting, there's gonna be more people moving in, and it's gonna be even worse. That's what I'm saying. And a lot of people here are saying the same thing. Yeah, we have to follow the rules. I followed my rules all my life. People are moving in from I don't know where, and don't care where they're from, they have a big sign saying, we don't abide by rules or anything or your laws. They pick up, move in, so, does that mean I could go ahead and move anywhere I want to? Yes or no? I gotta abide by rules, but again, I don't have to, you're gonna have to wait until somebody takes me off of it.
So, we, to, please understand that we don't have a lot of authority either, we're using all the authority we have.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I can move anywhere I want.
The same as, as you could, but you would have, at some point, you would be restricted by the sheriff, by the county, by CCMD.
I called the sheriff's office, and they said there's nothing they could do, because it's illegal. That's what the sheriff's office told me.
Yeah, they have actually posted on their Facebook today.
That there is nothing wrong with it.
Been up there repeatedly and has cited with them a hundred percent, just this evening.
So...
How can it be legal?
It's legal in the, in the county. Up here, it, we have no rules, I guess it's covenants, and covenants could be broken, according to what some people told me.
All right, folks, let's, let's cut this, if we continue this road, we're going, this meeting's gonna last all night.
Well, no, I'm, I'm just, I'm just asking a question.
Let's go ahead and go on through our meeting, and then after the meeting, after our meeting, if you would like to discuss it more, if you want to...
There's probably gonna be more than me.
If you wanna discuss it more, hang around, we will discuss it, we'll let you know what we've, what we've gone, kinda work ahead of it. But let's work on through our meeting first, so the people, we can kinda work with that. But I absolutely will be able to, after the meeting, if you wanna discuss things.
I will too.
We'll absolutely discuss it. We do have an issue, but we're, we're not trying to ignore this issue.
And it's, and just, and real quick, it is very frustrating to all of us, very frustrating. I mean, you're, you're kind of preaching to the choir here, because we're as frustrated as you guys are, it's not war, so...
I understand that too, but you know, there's overnight, big thing, we're overnight...
Wait till it's done.
Let's, let's move on, and you, we, we can discuss it outside the meeting and just beat it up, yeah.
Can I ask a question about the water taps? When you, Greg, when you talked about the water taps, trying to increase them to twenty thousand and said comparing it to Pueblo West? I mean, Pueblo West's population is thirty-two thousand, over thirty-two thousand people, we're a population of three thousand. I think if we're trying to inflate at the rate that Pueblo West is going, that's just not, it's not feasible, and, and we're actually gonna drive people out, rather than bringing people in. We're gonna end up with properties that are owned, but nobody maintains them, they're just gonna be overgrown, and they're gonna be mosquito fest.
That, that would be another thing I'd be more willing to talk to you after, more than me, okay?
Okay, I don't have any attorneys report, agenda items. First one is resolution zero eight zero two two, it is the amending of rules of regs sixteen point two, point three, uh, OHBs and belt carts on metropolitan roads, or off, I would be, on Colorado City Metropolitan.
Oh, I make a motion at this time that we adopt resolution zero eight, uh, dash twenty twenty-two.
Can I get a second? Move to the second, discussion. Terry, are you still with us?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Any discussion? Then let's vote. Terry, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Sarah? Greg?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Sarah votes yes. Resolution adopted.
Okay, resolution zero nine dash two zero two two, accepting and confirming, uh, roads, that is Gilpin Street, Douglas Way, Jefferson Court, and Sheckler Court. Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna do the, adopt resolution zero nine dash two zero two two.
Ben, move, I can say.
I'll say.
Move to the second, discussion? We got a call from our time.
No, don't worry about it, they, they, they're, they're...
Okay, move to the second, discussion? Let's vote. Terry? Chair votes yes, Greg?
Yes.
Okay, yes. Terry?
Yes.
Okay, adopt. Okay.
Okay, all business, so, come in, it's later, uh, I know Neil was working on that with me, uh, to get that. Applewood Park, I have got an update from, uh, the surveyors, says here we're finishing up the plot, we just, we just have to get access approval from the county before we can submit, which I am planning on to get this week. So, we're on that in getting all that property back into IS one.
And also, I, yes, I did talk to our two strategic... And also, I, if I did talk to the certificate back to back on the flight, and on that Applewood Park issue as far as whether we can actually, uh, by eminent domain or how we can, you know, covenants on, to fix the problem, that's kind of the issue. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, doing well, still haven't heard back from Rich. I'm not fed up with that too, and probably put it out a bit. Uh, there's some things that I would like to, uh, give you some more information from the area in that while as to, uh, whether it would be worth even putting it into our system. Uh, after the last test, it was very hot, and, uh, I'd like to have the full information on it to you, to you guys.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
So, um...
You're now?
Yes, I mean, this contractor, he doesn't even sound like he's responding to you anymore. Um, how many, I know that, I know that these guys don't grow on trees. State of Colorado's got certification processes for somebody to grow a well. Um, and they gotta meet these certain certifications. How many people do we have here that are available in Southern Colorado? How many companies?
I think the closest one we have was the one out of Castle Rock. Or this...
And this was out of Walsen Burke?
No, this was out of Denver.
Out of Denver.
And they actually do a lot of wells in Texas and, uh, New Mexico, uh, and Colorado. Colorado well. Colorado well, the only other one.
Yeah. So we basically got less than, less than a handful.
Yeah. You're talking about an eight hundred foot, uh, constant flow of pressure line. That's why we drain out the water every once in a while.
A yield.
So I, along that line, I feel, Jim, is that, uh, there's something the board should take a position on that, we're gonna cancel our contract unless he gets with it. Should we, as a board, should we...
That's what I said, I, I think I would like to get all the information as to the premium and stuff to you guys as that information, and is it worth going forward with this? And should we just cancel it since it's been a year since we've had this contract?
So could we do that by next meeting?
Next.
Let's put that on the agenda next minute. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, next I have utility director, uh, no applications, nothing. I'm at gravel status, Tally's supposed to call me back soon, he finds out when, uh, the people that got the bid are gonna start up up there. He hasn't had a start type...
You know who got the bid?
Uh, it's a company out of Cameron City, and I think they'll do the only ones that bid.
I think my daughter's boyfriend works for that company, so I'll see if I can find out.
Uh, like I said, with the long line of vacation of, uh, seventy-seven one, I just moved it out for the Applewood Park. That's the lots for the Applewood Park.
Yeah, well, but, but I think that, uh, if you're interested, if you want to make a motion, if you want to make an issue, I would...
Yes, I would actually. Um, I'd like to make a motion at this time, uh, set up a public hearing in thirty days, uh, to raise the tap fees to twenty thousand dollars. Eleven thousand for water, nine thousand for sewer.
Do I have a second?
No, second.
Move to second, discussion? So what that is, is that is back to public hearing, so that is where the public has input.
Yeah.
What we would do if we passed that motion would be simply start the time period for the, the public hearing. And I'll do the thing out tomorrow. Discussion. Let's vote. Mr. Kraus?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Hunter? Barry? Sheriff votes no. Okay, any other old business? New business?
New business, uh, post office. She talked about it during the study session. I don't know whether if you want to, uh, have the board agree on a letter to Postmaster General in, uh, saying that there is...
I make a motion at this time that we ask Mr. Kraus, since he's our local newspaper guy, he can probably write better than the rest of us, um, to draft a letter, uh, to our two U.S. senators and our U.S. congressman regarding this issue. From the board. Give him some land to...
I second that.
Move to second, here's a discussion.
You got to draft, sorry.
Is everybody here in training?
I've seen the bright light.
Uh, no, I'm, I'm on paper doing that. Uh, I can, I mean, uh, the Postmaster indicated that there was a level of urgency about it, so I'll try to get a rough draft done and then kind of distribute it. If any changes necessary, we could maybe get it in the mail as early as two, out of Thursday, latest to decide. So could you just do the mail to us in good way?
Sure.
Okay, anything else? Let's vote. Mr. Kraus? You're gonna roll yourself in? I have to stand and come click on it.
Yes.
Mr. Oxterler?
Yes.
Ms. Hunter?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Jim, what's that?
Uh, CCAC, C, uh, under that, you have new construction, uh, forty-five thirty-one magnitude drive. You have a garage and forty-one fifty-five urea offense.
All right, let's get a motion.
I make a motion at this time that we approve the new construction of forty-five thirty-one magnitude drive for garage and forty-one fifty-five urea for fence.
I second your motion. Move to second, any discussion? Let's vote. Ms. Hunter? Sheriff votes yes, Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Oxterler?
Yes.
Mr. Kraus?
Okay, uh, next we have action items. We have eight first letters going out for complaints, uh, five second letters, six third letters, and one that we added tonight as being a stop in a cease sport.
An authorized structure?
Uh, no. No, won't be on authorized structure.
Just a cease and desist.
Chairman, I mean, that we issued the eight first letters, five second letters, six third letters, and a cease and desist. Move to second. Move to second, any discussion? Any questions about those? All right, let's vote. Mr. Oxterler?
Yes.
Ms. Hunter?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Kraus?
Yes.
Sheriff votes yes. All right. Correspondents?
I am not at this time.
Can you get out of here?
I make a motion that we adjourn this meeting.
Move to second to adjourn, that's adjourned.
Amen.
And we're adjourned. All right, I don't know.
I gotta go to the restroom, and then I'll be available there, right?
Then I'll know it all.
Thank you, guys.
I didn't know.
Hi, Harry.
Okay, question?
You guys do not ask me this.
You're all right, I say?
Exactly, no more.
I don't know. She said she don't like...
I didn't want to have a...
Yeah, that's why, you know. I've been here for two hours. Ben?